So I'm glad you could make it. And I certainly want to thank the Senior Citizen Center for letting us do this here today. We certainly appreciate your hospitality. I do want to welcome each and every one of you to the City Commission Candidate Forum, hosted by the Arkansas City Traveler and Chamber. City Commissioners walk, as you know, a very tight rope between running the city in a physically prudent manner while keeping taxes in mind for those of us who live here. From street maintenance and annexation to water issues, the city manager and commission make tough financial and policy decisions while attempting to please those who live in the community. It's the travelers and the Chambers' intent to keep those living in our city as informed as possible. I'm Sidney Bland, I'm the Director of the Chamber, and I would like to introduce the candidates to you in alphabetical order. Brandon Ebery.
Oh.
Charles Jennings. Commissioner Dan Yurkovich. Dwayne Eastman. And Commissioner Charles Tweedy. Today's format will consist of three-minute opening statements from each candidate, a carded audience question-and-answer period, and a three-minute closing segments. Questions from the audience will be written on cards and fielded to the candidates. So, without further delay, Brandon, if you will, please begin with your opening statement.
Stand up here for a moment. I think the format, Sidney will be sitting down for the rest of the time, correct? Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Brandon Ebery. Came in tonight, I want to tell you briefly about me, and then kind of go over a couple of little things, what I intend to do as Commissioner. First off, thank you for coming, and I also want to, I know it takes a lot of time out of your day, especially at 5:30 for those of you that work, it is very difficult to get here. And also, thank you to the other commissioners and the folks that are running. You know, it takes a huge time commitment to put yourself in this role. I've been attending meetings for about the past year, and it takes a lot of time, it really does, but it's worth it. This is our city, and this is our home. So, I wasn't born and raised here, but I spent most of my life here. Been here, graduated high school here, graduated from Cali College, and look forward to demonstrating tonight how I can lead this community, and lead this community for you guys. So, with a little bit of detail, I've got a few sample points that are of interest to me, and hopefully I get the opportunity to visit about, as one is the water treatment plant. And right now, there's a pretty big effort amongst the community, a pretty nice brown swill actually, in terms of folks that are looking to take a second peek at that and see if we can't do it in a more financial manner. My whole purpose behind that is, is for the sake of, I believe we're going to have to help out the hospital in the coming months, or maybe perhaps in the coming years. You know, we need this hospital or community, it employs a lot of people, and we need to be able to help them in the instance of the varieties. Lastly, you know, I run business for a living. I hire people, I employ people, and I groom people, and I know what it takes to lead people, and I think I have what it takes in terms of knowing how to financially get our city on track, and also keeping it on track. A lot of things I see, and it's gotten me as concerned as a citizen, is the amount of waste, and maybe it's not there, but it sure seems like it. You see a lot of, maybe it's a perception issue, maybe it's a transparency issue, but those are the things I want to look at, is making sure that you get all the waste out of the city. So, thank you for coming tonight, and I'll hand it over to Charles.
You can do whatever you want. I'm trying to keep my seat, but good evening to each of you. My name is Charles Jennings, native of Arkansas City. I think that I need to do some housekeeping at the very beginning, but for those of you, any of you who might have read the, saw the piece in The Traveler on yesterday, and come here tonight and look at me, I want to assure you that the campaigning and electoral process has not aged me 15 years overnight. So that was either an old picture, or I have used a lot of makeup to seem aged and wise. But I just want to remind you, from a leadership perspective, that you lead when the first paradigm, who does the city belong to? It's your city. It's your city. Oh, these things belong to the citizens of Arkansas City. I think, guys, you elect your leadership, choose your leadership, you choose people who will set priorities that align with the values of the citizens of this community. If we wanted to be like another community in western Kansas, or southern Oklahoma, or the east or west coast, we most likely would choose to live there. But we've chosen Arkansas City. And I think that that's a tremendous choice, I think it's a great choice, and it's a wonderful place to be, and I think we can do nothing but make it even better if we continue to work together. I am very limited because of the state things right now, since crisis, an economic crisis. And three things that would hold my attention, first of all, is healthy healthcare. We don't spend $30 million on something and then be half-hearted about whether or not it survives. We simply must make sure that our healthcare facility survives. We think it's essential to posturing us for growth, which leads me to priority two, which is strategic economic and population growth. Growth doesn't happen, that's a beautiful and memorable line, if you build it, they will come, but that's just a movie. In reality, if you plan for it and work towards it, growth happens economically and population-wise. I think we can do that, or we must plan for it. And finally, I seek to revive what has kind of advocated, which is our sense of community, our sense of belonging, our sense of welcoming, participation. I don't think that City Hall should be some isolated ivory tower, but I think that we should meet the citizens, and I think the citizens should not be afraid to meet us. Thank you for your time and your attention on tonight, and I'm glad to see you everyone who are here.
Good evening. My name is Dan Yurkovich. I'm a current City Commissioner, Vice Mayor, so give me a round of applause. Now, first off, I want to thank the Chamber, The Traveler for sponsoring this event, and I'd like to thank you all for coming tonight. So, basically, my main reason for running, the reason I ran two years ago, is that it seems like government, whether it starts at the federal level or all the way down here to the local level, starts, always starts a project, the next new thing, builds something, and is willing to spend our money without taking a second look. And that's why I originally ran. I'm a financial advisor by trade, I have a little bit of an understanding about balance sheets, and rates of return, and revenue versus outflow, you know? And so, I wanted to run, to put that expertise, at least to help with our city, as far as that was concerned. My wife is here, we have four children, ages 14 down to eight, and I'm concerned about their future. And you see the federal government building all kinds of debt, and we're going to talk about a water plant, I'm sure, a hospital, all kinds of debt we're doing here, and it's important that we don't burden them with all of that. And the things that we do, we don't just build a project without thinking about how we're going to pay for it in the future. We don't, you know, you can build a park, and maybe that costs you $50,000, but it's going to cost you some every year to mow it and put a new playground, you need to keep that in mind. And so, just those little things, I want to bring that expertise, and I care about the city, and I want us to be more financially healthy, and that's why I ran the first time. I think we've come a long ways in the last two years, see a couple of commissioners here, and you know, we really have been working, and the city's in much better shape than it was. It's not perfect, but I think we're coming in that direction, and I'd like another four years to keep working on it.
My name is Dwayne Eastman, and I am a newcomer. I have not run for political office before. I've lived in our city all my life except for six years, and I went to Wichita and lived there and went to school. I moved back in '74, started my family, and they're all grown, and I'm retired now from the NSF for elders. The reason I wanted to run for City Commission, for many years, I had, did not have a voice in the government at all. When you call a politician or send them an email, you don't get any response. And actually, I thought that maybe I could do a little bit of help to the city as giving word to the people farther up, which I may not be able to do. As far as I am concerned, I'm here to help the people of our city, and I will listen to each and every one of you that I can, and I'm not going to make any promises, I'm not going to change anything, because it's pretty impossible sometimes. I thank you for coming, and I appreciate the vote.
Good evening. My name is Charles Tweedy. This is the one part of public service that I dislike the most, is doing a public forum where I have to speak. I'm not that much of an orator, but I do like to be involved in local government. And I don't consider us politicians, I think we're people just serving the needs of the community. The important thing is that we try to listen to everybody, sometimes people don't think we do, but the ear is there. Sometimes, once I complain about something, there's always two other people that are saying we're doing a good job, so sometimes, that's why people don't think we listen, but believing heads out there, we hear people when they say things. I'm happy with the service we've had over the last four years. I think the Commission has done a great job of moving the city forward and keeping it on track financially. We've done a lot of cost-cutting measures to keep us on budget, keep employment rate as low as we can while still providing good service to all the citizens. So, with that said, I would hope that you would elect me for another four years, because I think the next four years are going to be just as exciting as what we've seen in
And as many of you can tell, we do have a basket with cards and pens, and so if you don't have one, go ahead and help yourself, and hold your hand up, and Andrew will be glad to come and field your question. Also, if there are several questions on one issue, Andrew is assimilating them so that we don't ask the same question over and over again. So if you have a specific question that's not to answer, just listen for a similar question. I'm going to go ahead and start, you get to go first, Charles, and I'm just going to get an issue, a question on an issue out there. Do you think the planned new water treatment plant is a good investment for the city of Arkansas City? Why, and why not?
I am going to say, I think that the city has a shared role to provide potable water for its citizens, healthy water. We've done that for the last 55 years. I don't see a reason why we don't, we're not in a position to continue to do that. The new water plant is less of an issue of do we build it, and more of an issue of is this the right time to take on such an expense? When we have a $30 million investment that we're struggling right now to attend, sometimes you have the greatest idea in the world, but the time just isn't right. And even if we have a tremendous interest rate and an attractive potential, if it is a strain beyond what we're able to endure, this probably isn't the best time to do it. I could see where that might be deferred, and we could perhaps consider moving past 2019, restructuring of the debt load for the hospital is possible, and we could change the affordability index significantly. Sometimes, a great idea just comes along at the wrong time, and I think this is hard to, to nurture the existing plant until we can get to where we can improve our affordability index and not be a burden. I've heard it said that the cost of water, units of water will drop, but I have not heard it said that the cost of water service to municipal citizens will drop. In fact, they projected that it will continue to increase over the next 10 years, regardless of the cost of operation.
Can you repeat the question again?
I will. Do you think the planned new water treatment plant is a good investment for the city of Arkansas City? Why or why not?
Well, I guess I have to say yes, because I voted for it. Or I could be like a Washington politician and vote for it right before I voted against it, but I won't be that way. So I'll say yes, it's a good investment for our community. And the reason I supported building a new water plant versus rehabbing the old one, and the timing is now, and all those things, I'll answer those points. So first off, the reason that I voted to go ahead and build a new water plant is when you look at the cost. Sometimes, and people have different opinions, and I hear different things, but sometimes the cost to fix something that maintenance has been deferred for so many years, it becomes more expensive than it would be to build something new. For instance, I own a building right here in downtown Arkansas City, the upstairs two levels have not been used, and it would cost multiple thousands of dollars to bring those back, because I now need to put in wiring that was up the code, there's no wiring there. You have to do plumbing, brand new, starting from scratch, because the old plumbing that was there wouldn't work. So sometimes it costs more, and there have been three engineering studies, 2006, 2010, and one that was completed in 2013. The last two, the engineers, actually, there were three engineering firms that said it would cost more, or almost the same, to rehab the existing plant as it would to build a new one. Top of that, the cost per unit of water, electricity, and personnel would go down, which will not save the citizens anything, but that would pay for the debt. Our water costs will stay just as it is scheduled to be, and be able to pay for it. If we fix the old one, we still have the same cost to create the water, because we're still using a less efficient method, but we still are going to have to pay for the debt, whether that's $10 million, or $12 million to fix it, or $20, like the engineers would say, we wouldn't have any extra revenue or lower costs to pay for that debt. So I think the water costs would go up even higher if we fix our plant rather than build a new one.
I've had a little information on the water plant, the refurbishing of the old one, and the cost of the new one. Just from looking what I have, seeing the refurbishing of the old one should have been done a long time ago, and it would have cost you so much, but now it's going to cost close to the same amount. But there's ways to get around that by just doing part of the refurbishing of the old one. Taxes, the cost of water may go up, may not, but the, I think we have to look at what the city is bringing in, and also the debt that we have with the hospital. It's not an easy answer, and hopefully I can get more information, make the right choice, and also listen to the citizens of Arkansas City.
The water utility is an enterprise fund that should be treated as a business, unlike a lot of the entities in the city itself. The Enterprise Fund is a fund that generates its own money to be funded by that fund. Our street department, and the police department, fire department, Arkansas City, are financed by, as a water plant is. I fully support a new water plant because of the last two studies we've had that indicate that it would be more economical for us to build a new plant. If we start what we have on the old plant, we may save over, just going to replace such and such, but then all of a sudden, something goes wrong, and we have to do even farther than that, we have no way of producing water if the plant's shut down. With the new plant, we don't have to worry about that, because we will have redundancy built in, that if one part of it should need service, we have another part that we will take over for that service. The Clearwell is set to begin production, or we're voting on that next Tuesday night. I don't see any reason why that won't go forward. Some questions have been asked, why don't we put it west of the old plant? I don't think it fits, the Clearwell itself is 85 foot in diameter on the inside, so there's probably another foot that we'd add to that. So yes, I will vote for a new water plant now, and that will be the only way I would
No, I have a, I'm going to take a real staunch position on the water treatment facility. Despite the financial difficulties with the hospital, I've reviewed, last commission meeting, there was a number of citizens that showed up at the commission meeting and said, we want you guys to put this water treatment facility on hold until the new commission comes in. We want that. And basically, we compromised and came to the agreement that on next Tuesday, which is also Election Day, that is the day that the current commission intends to vote in the new water treatment facility. The real question is, is not where it'll fit, is if that's the right decision. I don't believe it is. We are literally, will be, potentially have a new commission in there on the exact day that they intend to vote in the new water treatment facility. That day, one of the commissioners challenged us to take a finer look, do your research, and we did. We brought Pat McCool down here from KHE, and spent some time with him, and it confirmed everything I've been told. We have the ability to repair this facility for less than $10 million. How long will it last? Probably not as long as a new water treatment facility, but it will buy us more time. It is smarter, we won't have to loan any money to do it, we can do it in a progressive stage, where we spend a million dollars the next year, a million dollars the following year, we could even break ground this year. But please, urge your current commissioners to put off this water treatment facility, voting on it next Tuesday, because it is not a good investment for the city of Arkansas
The next question will be a very specific one, and it's going, and Dan, I apologize for butchering your last name, Dan Yurkovich. Whoa, there you go, will be answering first, very specifically, when the commission chose to change the trash pickup, what did you think of that decision, and what is your perception
I appreciate the question. This is one area that I differ from the majority of the commission. I did not vote to approve the purchasing of the trash containers, mostly because I had asked city staff to give us a complete map of which, which containers could be picked up in the alley, and we were told they would be flexible, but basically, it's turned out that no trash will be picked up in the alley. And that was something that I didn't think was a good decision, and I would stay there. I think the new containers are just fine for me. There were some alleys where the trash trucks had to back up, where they were too narrow, and would be six or eight inches from a gas meter, and I can understand where our, our trash collection trucks would not want to go down there, but there were some alleys I thought were just fine, and I decided to stay there with my opinion. I think it's probably going to work out just fine, and we'll all get along okay after we get used to it. So I'm not really too upset or anything, but that was my stance, and I think that was a pretty good position.
Well, I hated the idea when I started, but as time's gone by, like most things, anything new, you get used to. The can I had was big enough to handle all my trash, except at holidays, and then I understood that they will pick up extra at holidays if you call them. Well, that's one thing I like to get changed. At holiday time, you shouldn't have to call the city trash people to pick up extra trash, even at certain times. I can understand just loose trash, but if it's in a bag, it shouldn't be able to pick it up. I think I agree with Dan that I probably would have voted against it if I was the commissioner at that time. But right now, I think it's all right, and I think it will work out.
One of our initial reasons for going to curbside was safety rockways with these trashcans, because they're so much easier for them to handle. They don't have to stick their hands down in and risk getting punctured by needles, glass, or anything of that nature that may have broken in the trashcan. I know there's, I've dealt with a lot of them that are out there still reaching in the trashcans. If you see what I'm doing, then call the city manager, let them know. The other reason, and the reason I voted for it, was the future curbside recycling. That was a half a vote. I voted yes for the curbside recycling, no for the containers at the curbside unless that pre-cycling came on. I think we're in the, in the near future, we will see curbside. It's just at this present time, it's not cost-effective for us to do it, but as we get the route sorted out, and get the trash collection people on board, I think we will invest in curbside recycling. And I know we've got two curbside, or two recycling bins out there now, that have done an extremely, a large amount of business. I mean, they have to pick them up about twice a week because people use them so much, which has been tremendous. And that, in the long run, that helps us out on our tipping fees when we go to the dump to get rid of our local city trash.
As a consumer of city trash service, I've had my fair challenges as well, just due to the, doesn't fit anymore in the trashcan container, and blows over all the time, and you know, we're southwest Kansas, where we see a lot of wind, we get to build a new structure to hold it upright all the time. So, yeah, I've got that challenge, and so do many other people. And you know, when it's not blowing out, and they're all standing up, and you drive through town, they look nice, but when they're blowing over, and they're in the streets, and people don't want to go and pick them up, and I can't blow any of them necessarily, because they're going to blow right over again, that doesn't look nice, so it's trashy. Ironically, huh? So, had I been there, at the time to vote for that, I probably would have looked a lot more at privatizing trash service. I think there would have been more options, privatized trash service, as it closes on holidays. They'll be working tomorrow, folks, they will be picking up trash on most holidays. Furthermore, trash service, I don't know the statistics right offhand, but I would venture to bet that that is one of the city's areas where they have the most workers' complaints or files, due to the heavy lifting, due to the harsh environment, hopping off and, up and down off of moving trucks, you know, even when they had the, I've seen them take the new dumpsters, and I realize this is an employment problem, or a personality problem, but they're, you know, they're still, they've got the physical nature of lifting an entire trashcan, dumping it in the back of a trash truck. So, the, I would have really looked at privatizing it, and took all that liability and debt off the city, and would have given customers more options as well, so, thank you.
Through the process of discussion and the decision-making, there was, of course, throughout the city, a din of concern across the way up, in the coffee shops, people were upset. I thought, whoo, my cheese is trash, and it has to be collected. And this is one of those instances where, where actually I might even have waded towards the safety of city employees slightly more than the convenience of the citizens, because injured employees are expensive employees. But the decision was just kind of more of the black box technology. But the decision was just kind of more of the black box technology. I don't think the rationale was effectively communicated, and I don't think the need was effectively identified. It was just introduced, and it had a life, and it had wheels, and it had momentum before we knew when it came, and the next thing you know, it was there. The process is probably the bigger concern, the process is the bigger concern. When I talked to a friend of mine who lives in a small community in central Kansas, he said, "I understand the angst," but he says, "As long as I'm living in this small community, we have curbside service." That changed my paradigm significantly. A lot of people have curbside service already, but I think what tends to happen is the processes by which these changes are introduced that don't always effectively communicate the rationale until we are at the decision-making point.
Dwayne will be the first to answer this next question. Has to do with annexation. I have worked with Skyline Local Homes for a number of years. I estimate Skyline's local payroll at approximately five million dollars per year. If the annexation of Skyline would cause the company to leave Arc City, how would you, as a city commissioner, vote toward annexation?
It's always sad that you want to annex a business that they bring out that they may not be able to afford. There's a lot of studies that go into annexation. I'm not up on what the city has done, and I only hear what people out there say, they don't want to be annexed. And I think if there's plenty of information out there for everybody, that they should make a wise decision. If it was, if we would lose, absolutely lose Skyline Homes and their payroll, I would probably vote no.
I even have to agree with Dwayne. If we were guaranteed that they would leave town, that would be a definite no vote. There's no guarantee that they're gonna stay here even if we don't do it. I mean, it's a company decision at the corporate level. If they think they can make a deal with some other city somewhere, then they're gonna be gone. There's nothing that's really gonna keep them here. We probably can't offer them what other cities could if they really got serious about moving. But that being said, I, it's gonna be a tough decision to make, but as it sits right now, I think I would lean more towards not annexing some of the areas we propose. I think we're gonna have to look at them on a case-by-case basis and see where it would be beneficial for the city, beneficial for the people that we're gonna take in the city. If it's not gonna be beneficial for either one of us, then I'd probably would vote no on all of it.
As far as annexation goes, at first glance, I really thought it was pretty simple. We should annex these properties that are surrounded by city and have all the city services and this and that. The more I started talking to people and hearing feedback from the community, even had a couple of representatives in the room tonight that are in that area, and they come to the commission meetings as they should have, voice their opinion, and come to find out some of those properties don't have city services, even though they're in the city. Ironically, they're still on gravel roads and maybe they're on low water, so they don't even have city water, and most of them don't have a city sewer. So, but that being said, there's a lot of liability that comes with annexing those properties. You know, I live east of Chestnut, where I have poor water quality due to the infrastructure. I've got rusty water, or in time like this week, it's not that great, yellow, and some days it's clear, some days it's red. So what you gotta look at too is the liability and cost. Yes, it might be nice to have those businesses in the city, and maybe they should be by rights, but in the event that it's gonna cost the city more money to annex them, I don't know if it's a good business decision, besides the principle about it. You gotta look at it from a business decision as well. And you know, my house has been out there in the city for probably twenty or thirty years, and I'm still on septic tank. Do I see sewer in the future? Probably not. So with the idea to annex these folks and then promise them, when funds come available, we'll put that in there? I don't know. I'd have to look at it really hard. As of right now, I need a lot more information before I consider annexing anybody.
I actually view that less of an issue of annexation, although as a member of both the steering committee and the planning commission, I've seen the maps and I've seen those as identified as BD annex from the city. I think the bigger question than what's been mentioned by everyone here is exemption from the profit tax, more so than annexation. And that's done frequently. That's a very effective tool to recruit business, to support the expansion of business. I'm going to say that typically, when that's done, there's a cost-benefit analysis that says it is worth more for us to forgive the tax and allow companies to grow and to pursue a business opportunity that is for us to press them, to press them onto the tax rolls and limit the cash flow. The question is the exemption from the tax. I'm gonna say functionally, I don't think that in that construct, whether it is a small local business or a corporation that would move in here with deep pockets, I don't think we face the same thing with other businesses. I don't think that exemptions are permanent, but neither do I think that they should be rationally revoked without due process and without consideration and discussion. Again, I think we've got to do a better job of talking with people and understanding their dynamic. At some point in time, everybody eventually comes on the tax roll. We grow to a point where financial stability or that might be viable, but I think at this particular point, because of the way that just blew up without much dialogue, that it's not a good decision at this point. I think it's something that should just be pushed back, and a future would have taken that.
To answer the question straightforwardly, if it were to cause Skyline to leave, I suppose I would vote no. The one thing that happened during the process was that I don't think the commission meant it to be adversarial from the beginning, and it was, the idea was we were gonna consider these properties, and it became a heated issue right away. And the idea is that we want, the planning commission had identified these areas as they're really within the city, but they don't pay city taxes, and that just seems like it doesn't make sense. So the commission brought it, you know, as something to consider, having a hearing, and already before that it became adversarial. In fact, my position would be that we should take each little, there's three different islands, and take each zone and consider it separately, pros and cons of each, and talk to the owners there. I think we have a pretty good standing as a city. We're about to, there's about two point eight million dollars that's about to be spent, and some of it is being spent to expand Skyline Road, so those properties there are gonna have a significant economic benefit because of the activities of the city. So it makes sense that, you know, we should consider bringing them in right now. It's a good time when we're providing something to them, now, you know, maybe come into the city. Although I do think it should require, you know, we should go forward and move on, have a hearing, and see the pros and cons of actually annexation.
I have a specific question from someone in the audience, and then I'm gonna generalize it a little bit to attempt this a little bit more. After the fire of a garage in the north part of town, several hydrants did not work. What condition are our hydrants in? And I would like the candidates to consider, is the city doing enough to maintain, repair, or replace sewer and water lines, streets, and public facilities? And Charlie, your first step.
To be blunt, no, we're not, but we're living within our means, and we are doing as much water line and sewer replacement as our budget allows us over time. We've identified the worst areas of town, and we're gonna work on those as we get funds in the budget. I'm going back to the enterprise fund, again, the water and sewer funds will fund these projects themselves. The fire department will have onboard a schematic of all the areas where they're gonna respond eventually, that show them which mains may not be big enough for what they're gonna hook up to. That was the problem on North Eighth Street. The one hydrant they were hooking up to didn't have enough flow, had trouble getting it open, and they had to string lines of other places. I understand the concerns. We have the same problem on the east side of the river. That's why we're, in the future, I know we're gonna look at putting a standpipe and a redundant line across the wall at some point. I don't know how quick that's gonna happen, I can't do the funding. But in the short, in the short term, I will say that we are doing everything we can to make sure all the hydrants work, and the fire department does go out and open them up. Every so often, the water department does the same thing, just replaces the mains. So we have an idea of which ones might be problems just by the water flow coming out of the mains.
Yes, it's very apparent all across the city, we have water line problems and sewer problems, and it's really no fault of anyone's in terms of, other than they're aging. And we should have took a more proactive approach earlier on in the city's life in terms of reconditioning these pipes or replacing them as necessary. It's easy to say we're living well within our means in terms of water, when we're gonna go borrow twenty-two million dollars to build a new water treatment plant. It doesn't sound to me like living well within our means. Maybe to some people it is, but perhaps, you know, if we have these aging lines and we go build this brand-new water treatment facility that has very good water that comes out of it, in fact, it'll be very similar to the quality of the water we have today. But by the time you get to your faucet and my faucet and the next guy's faucet, it's still poor water because it's going through poor lines. So yes, we must take a very active approach at that. I would look at, look at replacing water lines before I would look at replacing water treatment plant. At the end of the day, the water you're gonna turn on and get at your faucet is only as good as the line that's running through, so you'd get those replaced.
As it relates to the ability to respond to structural fires, is it, again, it's not really a straightforward answer to that, because designing the building has changed some structures. Houses look a lot different, they're built a lot differently these days. Materials of construction are a lot different, the need to respond is a lot different, the standards imposed on fire departments are a lot different, response times are regulated by state regs and other regulations are a lot different. There are a lot of things that influence how we respond to emergencies and water transmission lines. I think that with small houses, a lot of shotgun houses, small square footage houses of years and years ago, those lines are more than sufficient, even in their coding, structure, and identification of flow capacities. We built bigger houses, we densify properties and neighborhoods, so the need to respond is even greater. We have not kept up with that, and that's kind of almost impossible to do. But when the phrase is used that says, "We're living within our means," I don't entertain exception to that, because as city hall and governing body, living within our means, simply means functioning off of the funds or revenue derived from taxpayers. The question is, are you living within those taxpayers' means? It's easy when you can reach into a bucket and pour more money out, i.e., increase a tax, raise a fight, a service fee, but your citizens don't have that option. We can't impose a tax or a fee on other folks to make up for the revenue that's been removed from our disposable income because of those. We're not living within city halls' means. I mean, we're living within city halls' means, but we're not living within our citizens' means.
I know that there is water line, that there are water lines that are being replaced that should improve fire hydrants. Part of the plan, twenty-two million dollar loan, a portion of that is meant to pay for about three to four miles of, three miles of new water lines?
Yeah, right.
Four. Four miles of new water lines would be part of it, which just really scratches the surface because when you think about all the water lines crisscrossing around town, there's a lot of miles of water lines. Many of them are a hundred years old, and we had one commission meeting where the city engineer brought in a cross-section of a pipe, and it was still almost full of rocks. It was an old cast iron pipe, and we've got a lot of those under the city. What we, the commission, current commission has done is identify, we know that our water system needs improvement. Priority one for the water system is it doesn't start if you don't have good wells and a good water plant. Two engineering studies, and now it's been years since there's been any major maintenance on the water plant, and said we need a new one, so that was priority one. Once we get that fixed, and we're gonna do some water lines, then the revenue that you pay, the revenue that comes from water bill you pay, will then, the next priority is to continue replacing water lines. That's the way. Charlie had already alluded to it, that's a revenue, that's an enterprise fund, so everything to do with water gets paid for for your water bill. My understanding is in the past, some of your water bill revenues went to the city general fund, and we've stopped that. Step four, I mean, there is part that goes to pay for the city manager, but part of his job is to oversee some of those enterprises. So now your water bills are staying within the water department and fixing water things, plant lines, and so on. Could you repeat the question?
I can, I certainly can. After the fire of a garage in the north part of town, several hydrants did not work. What condition are our hydrants in? And then the more generalized question, is the city doing enough to maintain, repair, or replace sewer and water lines, streets, and public facilities?
The, I think the main question here is if the city's actually doing enough to repair the water lines because of a fire in the garage, it almost caught a house on fire. I don't know what the plan is, how much they have planned to fix each year, and it should be, I don't know how much should be, but should be what the city expands cost. But what I would like to see is more emphasis put on replacing lines, not only for drinking water and for firefighting, because if we do not have water, if fires, these houses, then that's even worse.
Brandon will be the first to answer this one. This is a follow-up water question. If the city decides to move ahead with the new water treatment facility, will the city see to it that employees actually take care of it? And basically, the rest of the question in
And basically, the rest of the question entails, what will you do to ensure that 15 years down the road, things won't be forgotten about?
That's a very interesting question, kind of dynamic in two facets. Whether or not, one, will we take care of it and how to be able to get that away? I've heard from city commissioners, current staff, and employees that the fact that we've been talking about the purchasing of new water facility for so long, we have deferred maintenance on it. That's just the truth. We have chosen, I mean, I was just told yesterday or the day before that we got duct tape on pipes, okay? Whether or not that's true, I haven't been through there, but we are choosing to defer maintenance. And that starts with leadership. Whether you're, whether you own it, still hanging on it, or you've got a brand new one, it is our responsibility as city leaders to ensure that we're taking care of safe property. And the water treatment facility is your guys' property. And interestingly enough, I was out visiting Virgil Watson the other day at the hospital and the most admirable thing out of our conversation that day was he was most concerned not about if the hospital would fail or if the city of Arkansas City would help him out, but it was, in fact, will I be able to afford to maintain my brand new hospital? And I thought that was pretty commendable in the spirit that I think he's the right guy because that's what I want to see. I want to have people in leadership positions that are willing to take care of our assets.
Similar form of this question came up in a forum on Tuesday evening and I just, I wish that the world was a snapshot and we could just look at it and say, this is the problem and it's got a simple definition. Well, a lot of what's happened, there once was a schedule, an original maintained maintenance program, preventive maintenance, strategic upgrade. What happened in our community over about 10 year periods, we experienced 16 different elected commissioners and governing body. We went through four different city managers and I think we lost the pulse of what needed to be done in our community in terms of maintaining our infrastructure. There wasn't leadership, there wasn't leadership, there was flux. And what we're seeing right now is the cost of flux and no continuity. I think it's important to have the right people in position. I think it's important to, what we're learning is that scheduled maintenance is non-negotiable. Scheduled maintenance is non-negotiable. That's a cost and that should be in every department's budget as we go forward and it should be something that happens in an affordable way and at a planned rate such that we don't have the crisis of the month about what needs to be fixed. These things can be done. Every piece of mechanical equipment comes with a recommended scheduled maintenance and a projected life expectancy. We need to honor those things, we need to have people keeping eyes on those things. That's the type of thing that you use as a priority and focus. Those are the instructions that members of the governing body ought to be communicating to the city manager so that that is monitored and honored. It's the best interest of the taxpayers.
So the question was how I'm sure that things are made, a new water plant is maintained and the way I would do that is to make sure that we have city manager who cares about maintenance and I think we do. And I appreciate Mr. Jennings' endorsement of incumbents. We've changed, no, I'm just kidding. We don't need to necessarily go a different course. We're on, we're working on maintaining things, but there has been a history of not maintaining things. And as we tour the city and build a list of those things that need to be done, it's a matter that we can't do everything at once without raising the taxes. And the bill levy hasn't gone up in over a decade and I don't want to raise your taxes in order to do it. I don't want to try and squeeze every penny out of overall revenue to do the maintenance we did a few years ago. But that, the main, what I'm going to do is, is hold our city manager and department heads, I'm just the city manager telling them to make sure that needs to be done.
If the city does, if the city commission does decide to go and spend 22 million or 15 or 16 million repairing the old one, I would definitely make sure there's a maintenance schedule that is followed. Everybody owns property just about and none of us are able to go where you can't use it anymore. So that's what I would do. I would make sure there is a policy in that requires the city commission to follow a maintenance schedule or direct the city manager to do that. Sidney, could you refresh me on the question?
Yes. If the city decides to move ahead with the new water treatment facility, what will you do to ensure it is taken care of?
Okay. It will definitely be a scheduled item when something needs to be cleaned, checked, replaced, it will be done. The current city manager is a stickler on that kind of stuff. I'll never forget being in his office the day that he had gone down to the water plant and walked through it and in the electrical room, there was a tarp covering all the breaker boxes because there was a hole in the roof that hadn't been fixed for who knows how long and that was to fix for the cargo. Like immediate, that roof was fixed. He said, "That's just not going to work." We have had small leaks in the piping down there also that we've had good clamps on with chains running around the pipes and stuff. I haven't seen duct tape, that might just be hearsay, but I don't think duct tape would hold the pressure of the water. But we do have a big clamp on one of the, one of the lines. We don't know if we're going to get any more of those, you know, and then at some, at some point, they, they need more work than we can afford without the new plant being built.
Okay, Charles, she'll be first on this one. What exactly would you do to promote economic growth in our city? How would you bring in more businesses, et cetera, and new housing, economic development, and that sort of thing?
Let me take a rest for just a moment. When this earlier sidebar, I will clarify with Commissioner Dan that it was not a recommendation of the planning commission to de-annex those, I mean, to annex those properties, but there were recommendations to look at things for future planned use and whether or not we wanted to be consistent harmonious. If we began, I mean, there's, there's, growth and economic development doesn't happen randomly. It has to be part of the strategic plan. Right now, what my understanding is, is that the fourth that comes from our economic development engine is that really we are somewhat starved for capable employees, job-ready employees or the employers that we do have in the county. If that's changed, then of course that would be a delight also. I think that right now our focus needs to be on if that's our problem, how do we get job-ready employees? We need to take, and that's, that is a piece of taking care of what you have. Again, that's the same mindset as it is with the infrastructure, as it is with economic development. It doesn't matter how many employees you have if you don't have a concern, demonstrate a concern and support for their success in this community. We need that. So one of the things I think we need to focus on right now is we're moving away from the space for reliance of the state for training of employees. It doesn't seem to be working. And it takes some initiative on our own to get job-ready employees so that we can supply these local businesses that are proficient in plastics and blow coating. We have machinist jobs surrounded, we have some homegrown businesses and we need to show support for them and ask what their needs are and how we benefit facilitate their growth. If it means exemptions, let's give them exemptions. If it means staffing, let's help them with staffing. But let's focus on what the needs are here because when we show that we are successful with what we have, we certainly can appeal to others who are looking for some place to come to, to succeed.
For growth, there's only limited, I don't want to have the city become, or to go into business to try to grow things and so I think there's a limited amount of things that I would like to see the city do or me as a commissioner. One thing that we do is support the chamber to help bring in business, Cali First. And then also, the other thing that I, that would be my job there is to make sure that in the city manager and his annual review and his raises, that that's a component of that. Our city manager went to, I mean, it was really, he was a big part of getting the Best Western to come here. He was a big part of helping Creeksone with the expansion and after the fire that they had out there. I mean, that was a, a time on title, a tightrope of what Creeksone would do. He was a big part of helping with that to get them to stay here and not just stay here but expand. And then the other thing that we can do as a city is to help with certain tax incentives and when a business does want to come here. And those kind of things we can do as a city when there are opportunities that maybe the chamber or Cali First or the city manager has, has found that might want to relocate in our city, I would be supportive as a commissioner to try and help those things actually come to pass.
Well, I'm not a businessman and what I would like to do is refer to people that are knowledgeable on economic development, whoever it is, it's always good to have help businesses. But to promote it, I think we need to listen to Cali First and the chamber and city manager because they're the ones that are going to know and as a commissioner, be a job to pick the best option for the city. This is a very good question. Where do you start with business recruitment? You have to have the housing in order to put people up when they, when they move here to go to work, you have to have the housing. You have to have the infrastructure, you have to have the school system, which we have a very good school system. We're very lax on housing at the present time. We're working on that. We've done a couple of surveys through Cali First. They've identified our needs. We're talking to developers to see if we can get them to come here. That's another thing, do they want to spend the money to speculate on building houses? In this economy right now, it's starting to turn around, but there's no guarantee that any of our businesses are going to expand. And I think, and we've, what we have done through Cali First and through the chamber is concentrate more on the local businesses to help them grow and when we see growth with, with the local businesses and then the outside people start looking at us going, there's a positive vibe in our Kansas City and in our industrial park, Gulf Industrial and Strathfield itself, and then they're more likely to consider coming here at that point. Lost my train of thought. I get confused so easily with, when I start talking about industries coming in. We have, we have had some people come in and ride around and look at the community and their main concern was, where are all of our employees going to come from? And we try to assure them that unlike the country he came from, they will drive 50 miles to go to work rather than walk out the front door. And we had a tough time convincing them that. I don't think we did because he decided not to relocate here. We do have, we do have expansions of business. Creeksone has expanded.
I think it's a fair question. What are we going to do? Three short years ago, me and some of my colleagues decided to start our own company and just a hope and a dream and a lot of hard work, we were like, let's build a company right here in Cali County. And we chose a little place out in Strathfield that we like to call home, but it is very, very difficult to start a new business. It is tough. There are a lot of challenges that you see, there's a lot of challenges you don't see. And they come in phases. First one, obviously, is funding. So, you know, the, the idea that businesses get tax incentives is, is real, you know, it's, it's hard to start something when you don't have any money. And any, any little bit helps when it's critical times. So can't say I'm in favor of all, you know, tax abatements and this and that, but certainly worth looking at because here's the thing, folks, if we don't get it, the next little town of 12,000 people down the road will. So if we want them here, we've got to consider it. Secondly, the big challenge I found in starting a business in Cali County is we're the first business in about the last eight years that's started a business of our size. There just isn't a lot of help. We've got great people at Cali First, wonderful people at the chamber, but they're not experts. It's not like they start a new business every day. So I would, I would offer that we would give them the resources they need, support them financially to be able to do that. And the last challenge that's really been tough is the code enforcement. We've got to look at our codes to be a business-friendly city. We blanketly adopt codes without reviewing them entirely as cities and municipalities and with the unintended intentions of thinking we're doing the right thing and ultimately we're driving businesses away. And the last offering I got is we've got to support our educators. Cali College has nice, nice programs. We've got, we've got to help them as, as necessary to support the businesses that are running.
Dan will be the first to answer this question. This is one that I had gotten when we, when we announced that we were going to get with the traveler and have this forum and since then, I've had several callers and several people come in and your question is, is the city doing, no, no, that's not it. What should the city's role be in making sure South Central Kansas Medical Center stays financially solid?
Well, in some ways, we don't have a choice. When, when the debt for the city was issued, the bond covenant says that the city must tax or find some other revenue source if the hospital can't afford it. So our option would be, if we don't want to pay for those bonds, we go bankrupt. So that's, so the city isn't going to be involved. They are at, the interest rate the hospital has to pay is 7%. Those bonds can't be refinanced until 2019. If the hospital feels that they need a sales tax, I think part of the reason the sales tax went down before was, was worded in a way that people found it palatable. It didn't say really what it was for, it was just kind of for the hospital and maybe the city could keep it if they wanted. I think if the hospital really needs a sales tax, I'd be willing to support a sales tax that specifically would go to pay off the debt of the hospital. And, and that's an area where we could help. Other than that, I'm not really sure. I don't miss, I don't want to see taxes go up in order to support the hospital. And if, in a, in a short term, there is, I think it was one, there is a reserve fund that the city had set aside to pay its short-term expenses, but that won't last all that long. So we'll need to do something else and I know the CEO there is trying to raise revenue, get the hospital designated differently so we can bring in more revenue. I hope all those things work out and they don't need a whole lot of support and maybe we don't have to do that auction. But if we do, that, that would be my way where I would support the hospital.
I would definitely support anything that's needed to be done to keep the hospital. I don't think that any town would like to lose a hospital and have to drive 50 miles to get healthcare. I don't like to raise taxes because I've paid the taxes, but we cannot let
Uh, I don't like to raise taxes because I've paid the taxes, but we cannot let a hospital that we've built go under. I know a lot of people that have used it, I've used it, and we just cannot afford to let it go. And, uh, I think it's the commission's job to make sure that we keep healthcare for the city and its residents.
As Dana said, the city does have a fund that we can assist the hospital with, uh, needing their debt payments. Um, one of the biggest things we need to do is recruit physicians. The more we have here, the better it is for the hospital. Uh, just taking the A.C. Clinic as an example, they've got two doctors that are talking retirement right now within the next couple of years. We're going to need to recruit at least four more physicians to, to replace them and to, to help the hospital continue to grow. Um, at the present time, the 30-year bond that was issued by the Public Integrity Commission has a $21 million, well, almost $22 million payback on the debt. And their total long-term debt at the hospital is $25 million. They, I want to say every month, but a general consensus is they write off on that debt, charity write off $90,000 or some thousand dollars. If you extract that out, that becomes almost a million, a bit, a, a, a million dollars a year that we just have to write off because people don't pay their debt or they can't afford to pay their debts. I don't know that there's an answer we can have there, um, unless we start a fund for bad debt, you know, that I mean, uh, insurance should be available to everyone, I think. I, I think it is. I, I don't have to break out that. I don't pay attention to the Obamacare insurance, but I think it's out there and should be utilized. And we can't turn those people away, but that's, uh, that's the only thing with the physician recruitment, I believe is the biggest thing to do to stop offset the losses the hospital has right now.
So, what's it going to take to get the hi, the hospital financially secure? Um, first thing is start with the truth. Um, I've been attending these commission meetings for over a year now and I was there when the, uh, former CEO proposed to the commission to put the, uh, sales tax ballot out there to support the hospital. And I can see why people voted it down. It, it was, it wasn't all the truth. Uh, they knew at that time that the hospital was in a financial situation that was, was not promising. And, uh, you know, I think we've got the right guy in there now to, that is overturning autaroxes, exploring things that were earlier on dismissed. Uh, if we have to help the hospital short-term, I think we, I think we should. Uh, I'm not proposing a sales tax because I don't think it'll pass. Um, I think we've got other entities within the city that we can look at cutting back to help support the hospital and they, in order to help them short-term. But, uh, the 2019 will be the, will be the crucial, crucial year to see how the hospital really does when, when, if we can make it to then, when we have the opportunity to refinance, uh, there is a valid point there to get a lower interest rate and certainly have the opportunity to help the hospital in that direction.
Um, the healthy healthcare is priority one for this community for two reasons. It's, it's critical to economic development. Secondly, because it's just not wise to spend $30 million to build a facility and then not be committed to its success. You have to be committed to its success. We don't have a choice on that. Uh, from the governing body perspective, first of all, we have the ability to make sure that we appoint strong leadership there as that board trustees. I think that's a critical thing. That is a piece that we have hands on, opportunity to do. Look, that makes sure we have the right people there to support the administration. The next thing is to send a strong message that we want the right leadership too there. That's usually been communicated. We're quite pleased with, uh, everyone seems to be, with the current CEO. The next thing we need to do is we need, before we start re, proposing our own remedies, is give that CEO a chance to complete his assessment process of both the fiscal state of things at that hospital and the opportunities for economic recovery. Uh, and then bring that report to us with his recommendations. I think we should look hard at his recommendations. I think that we should consider what level of support is being asked for. I think most of all, it is not wise knowing that that obligation is upon us and it is such a precarious debt to take on another $30 million debt for the city right now. That would strap us and restrict our ability to respond to an urgent need. We don't want to lose that hospital at all. Finally, I think that as elected officials, we don't do everything right here in town. We don't live on an island. And we are influenced by things that happened in Topeka and we are influenced by things that happened in Washington, D.C. And I think we should lobby our elected officials. I think we should make our concerns known with other cities our size, that they need to do things that are favorable to rural hospitals and reimbursement on Medicaid and Medicare and those types of things because that plays a big role in the financial viability of this facility.
Dan will be first to respond to this question. And I have no way of knowing about these facts, so I'm just going to go ahead and read it. Please respond to the city's current financial status compared to five years ago, considering the city no longer bonds out routine capital purchases. The city's beginning cash balance has risen from $10,000 to over $100,000.
I'm going to tell you, I have no idea. I don't. Well, the only way that, uh, I could answer this is if you look at the, uh, city's budget. I've looked at their budget and, uh, I, I don't remember spending $100,000. So, I'm going to pass it on.
This is a correct statement. We have got to the position where we don't bond out things, that we're trying to take cash for everything. The last time we hit a bond issue was to finance the 2009 temporary notes and that's the, we did that in 2010, I believe. But our cash balance has risen from, from around $10,000 to at least $800,000. Um, I, I think, if I remember right, somebody made a comment about how could we have a cash reserve to lower so much in debt with the hospital? Oh, it's kind of like having a savings account when you own a house. You have the savings account, but you're still making a house payment. So, technically, we should have a cash balance in this time of, in this year of at least a million and a half, just to tide us over in case of emergencies. I think eventually we're going to get there. It may take us three or four years to do it, but that is what we need to have in our general fund budget.
Yeah, I, I think I've heard the $800,000 figure enough times to say that it's probably accurate. Um, I've heard that a lot recently, so. Um, as far as the amount of operating expense in a, in a general fund, uh, to me, that number's slightly skewed relative to, you know, look at the entire balance statement. I mean, each, there's about, I don't know, appears to be about a dozen different elements within the city's budget that they all have their own balance. So, the general fund's one that just collects a lot of things. Uh, we do have the ability to transfer money in and out of the general fund as, as required from other entities, but it's got to have a commission approval and other things. Um, there are some liabilities there, some risk. I think we've got to have a certain amount of general fund there just in case of emergencies, but yeah, kudos to the current commission. Sounds like you guys out there paying $100,000. Good job.
What was the question? Please, okay, that's why you handed it to me. Please, you've got to talk too long. Please respond to the city's current financial, city's current financial status compared to five years ago, considering a lot, a lot, a lot. Okay. Uh, actually, uh, I am more concerned with what the city's, uh, financial status will be, uh, look like if we endet ourselves further without having gotten a handle on our healthcare situation. Two things that people don't do in terms of both our priorities and priority budgeting and our opportunity to grow rather than to shred. People don't drive 50 miles away from a community where the median income is $20 an hour to a community where the median income is $12 an hour. The other thing people don't do is they don't relocate to a city where they know healthcare is going to be a 50-mile drive away. I think we've got just, you know, priority number one on what we do to remedy the situation and stand where we've got to deal with the elephant in the middle of the room. Once we get a handle on that, a lot of these other things begin to take shape. I would really say we ought to look at where we are and where we're going and not look at a, an accounting change that moves money around from fund to fund and, uh, puts it somewhere that makes us look more attractive when in fact it is simply having starved out other budgets in order to get to that place. We need to stay focused on what's right in front of us. We have to stay focused on what's right in front of us and not get lost in a feel-good moment. This is mostly an accounting change that moves funds from one place to another so that we can say that we have a cash balance of $800,000. We have to operate on cash basis as long as the state of Kansas is required. We cannot operate in a deficit like Topeka or like Washington, D.C. We've got to be paying our bills month to month and we've got to focus on the one out there that's going to strain us in just a few months.
I also appreciate the question and it is a true statement. Uh, one of the biggest things about that statement says the city no longer bonds out routine capital purchases. And that's one thing that I think the current commission has done very well and the city manager, both for the, working together, is it no longer when, when there is a piece of equipment that needs to be purchased or even just general expenses, that money is no longer borrowed. It's money that has already come in, uh, through tax revenue or, uh, you know, walk, utility rates, those kind of things. So, the money is already there and we're no longer borrowing just to keep expenses, just to pay our expenses. That'd be like, uh, like what Washington does or what a person does that, you know, if you earn $3,000 a month and you spend $4,000 a month on your credit card, you might make all your bills, but you're adding a thousand a month to your balance on the credit card. And the city's no longer doing that. We don't bond out regular purchases. And that's how the cash balance has been able to grow, $800,000. Because on top of not borrowing more or not spending more than is coming in, the city has, uh, spent a little less than is coming in so that there is money in that in case of emergency. Hopefully, they don't have to spend any of the general fund to keep the hospital going. But, and that's the kind of thing though that you have, you have, you have emergencies to come for.
There's one question here that is so specific and we are fortunate enough to have our mayor, Chad Johns, here. So, whoever asked the question, who does the city attorney work for, the commissioner of the city manager, and why hasn't this physician come up for bid? You may want to check with, with Chad or some of the other commissioners here because it is now time for closing remarks. And Charlie, excuse me, will be the first to do that.
We've heard some good answers tonight. Some I don't agree with, coming off my due. I'm an optimist. I, I like to think there's always going to be something good happening in our Kansas City. If we get the citizens to have assistance with things that they know that we don't know, then it becomes even better. I, I know there are enough people out there that know somebody that owns a business that would like to relocate, but they haven't made contact with them, we don't know about them. That's why we're, we, we try to make the call out to anybody that knows somebody that's looking to relocate. Get ahold of us, get ahold of CaliFirst, get ahold of the Chamber. I know I've sent three or four inquiries to the CaliFirst myself and to the Chamber. They've made contacts. Uh, businesses are still trying to decide what they really want to do. But without the citizens' help, we're just five guys. I mean, we're just the commission and, and we can't know everything. We can't do everything. It has to be a total community involved. So, with, with that being said, I would like to serve another four years. I think I've done a good job the last four. If you don't think so, don't vote for me, but I, I sure appreciate it.
First off, I want to start by thanking the Traveler and the Chamber of Commerce, uh, guest on a pretty nice presentation tonight for the folks of our Kansas City. Uh, it, it does take a lot to get up here and put your name out there and put yourself at risk if running this commission. So, again, thank you for those that have served and those that are attempting to. One thing you can expect out of me as a commissioner, I'm pretty straightforward. Uh, I like to be involved and I like to fact-check. It wasn't just but a few months ago when Steve Perkins was in the, in the city chambers there proposing a sales tax deal. I mean, he had made a comment that, uh, for every physician that's out there, they should be bringing in 1.9 to 2.3 million. And he told that in front of the whole commission and everybody nodded their head and smiled and proposed to, uh, go ahead and venture into a sales tax, put that on the ballot. And I started doing some research and it just didn't make sense to me. And I started adding up numbers, the captain amount of physicians we had. And I said, well, either, either our physicians are doing really poorly or your numbers are wrong, both of which are your problem. And, um, ultimately, our physicians are doing fine. It's, it's, his numbers were wrong. And I see that a lot. I see that a lot. I see it on the water readers. We justified water readers saying that 30% of our, uh, water is being lost because we have poor watering and we justified all brand new water readers. When the truth of the matter is 50% of our water is being earned well because it's used by two prime users, Creeksone Farms and Canpack. They use over 45% of the city's water. So, the numbers that are skewed and the sales pitches that are cold don't work for me. I'll fact-check them. I'll research them and I'm not going to go off of what staff said was best for our community. I'm going to go out there and dig in, find out what it takes and make sure your dollars spent well. And, and lastly, the thing you need to know is I have been attending these meetings for the last year. I've missed a few, but I've hit about all of them. I really have. I thank any one of these commissioners about something for that. Furthermore, I'm in a leadership role. I work with people every day. I work for people. I work under people and I know what it's like to be a customer. And, uh, I can tell you this, if you like me, you won't be sorry. Appreciate your vote.
Thank you all for your attendance and your attention and patience on this evening. Uh, I, I know there are cities and municipalities all across the state of Kansas. I, I look out and I see, uh, former members of the governing body who gave the best, done the best, uh, and trying to move the city forward. The fact that they are here is that they're, they're still engaged and still trying to contribute, still trying to, uh, move the city forward. A lot of communities don't have that, would love to have that. We simply have to, um, have leadership. We don't need public relations for the municipal staff. We need leadership. Leadership sets priorities based on the values of the citizens because we recognize that the city is the citizens and city hall belongs to the citizens. And we ought to hear the values, the concerns of the citizens, our pain constituents, and simply set an agenda that reflects the community that the people who live here would like to see. I know that people want low that the people who live here would like to see. I know that people want local healthcare. I know that we want control over that healthcare. We don't want someone from the East Coast making decisions about the type of services we will get when we go to our hospital. I think we've got to make that a priority. I think we have to make sure that we don't put ourselves in a financial position where we cannot respond to an urgent need by that facility. Secondly, strategically, we have got to do economic development. And economic growth does not randomly happen. It isn't. And if you vote, they will come. We have to understand, again, we've staffed an economic development agency who has put out a report that simply says, like, by God, we need employees who are ready to go to work and cause these businesses to be successful. That message has come out about one year, not two years, but not three years now, that we need to address a stable workforce. That needs to become a priority. We need to put the things in place that cause that to happen, not only for our sake and for our employees, but because when we become proficient at that, we create opportunities for people who live here to take on positions that work. NDT is a very good example of that. A program that came up, and now people are being placed all over these United States with that competency and providing that service. Where do they come from? County College in our Kansas City. That is how you cause economic development to occur. Finally, I hope that we become, and I would advocate that we would become a city that values the sense of community, open doors, open communications. I, I know some people feel differently about that, but I liked city commission meetings in prime time where people could come on after supper and still get and be a part of what goes on in the decision-making process of our community. I think we have made or created a little bit of angst, simply because we've made it a little bit impossible for people to come and voice their opinions by moving ourselves away from access to the general public. Any leadership, thank you. I would appreciate your vote.
My name's Dan Yerkovich, and thanks again for coming. And I hope you enjoyed the forum. I ran two years ago when I was elected. And I hope this time that you don't vote for me and I don't get elected. We put in a lot of time and we don't get paid anything, but I felt compelled to run again. And I, it was a tough decision for me. And my wife is here, and she doesn't want me to get elected so I can be home no more. No, I'm just, but I thought that my contribution over the last two years was for the good of the city and the good of the citizens. I agree with Brandon. Sometimes it seems like we're getting a sales pitch from city staff, and it's important to do fact-checking. I've done a good job with that. And, and as a team, helped the city commission to come to some good decisions. I did put my name on the ballot, so I guess I actually do want you to vote for me or ask you to give me some more time in our commission to continue what we've been working on.
I actually would like to be on the city commission. I've never had a chance to be in government. I always had a job that kept me out of town about 24/7. But since I'm retired, I have more time. And I'm just a common person like 95% of people in town. I can study facts. I know what is good. I know what is honest. And I hope that you will vote for me. That, and I promise I will do a good job. Thank you.
Well, in conclusion, I want to compliment you guys, Brandon, Charles, Dan, Dwayne, Charles. To get up here and to care enough about your community to go through this is commendable. I also want to compliment those of you who are, are here and cared enough to take time out of your busy day and your evening to come and show how much you care about our city. This hopefully has shed some light on the issues that affect all of us the most. If you have more questions of the candidates, I'm sure they won't mind sticking around to answer them. I would also like to remind you that early voting has begun, and that is in the county annex. It's the building south of the county courthouse in Woodfield. And I believe you can vote there until noon on Monday. And if you don't, vote early. Don't forget to vote on Tuesday. You're in town from 7:00 to 7:00. And thanks again for coming.